All right, I call this meeting to order. Role call Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Alfire.
Here.
All present. We will stand for the pleasure of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you.
Please unmute.
Yep.
It was green, now it's red. Is it opposite?
Let's see. Since microphones are not muted.
No, they're working.
Okay. I'll take a motion to elect the chairman.
I will make the motion to...
We're muted.
I will make the motion to elect Kamala Ross as chairwoman.
I was second.
And now you say all those in favor?
Any discussion? All those in favor. Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yep, motion passes 3-0 and Chairman Ross to take over.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Okay, we do have an agenda in front of us. I would like to propose that we delete number seven. Our HR person said it was not appropriate at this point for it to be on our agenda, so we can delete that.
Motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. We have an agenda. Public comment, anyone? Not seeing any. Commissioner comment? Thank you. Okay, we're getting down to action. And I believe this is a pretty informal three-member, four-member group, so...
So, okay.
So who?
We're on organizational...
Darcy's up. Thank you.
All right, starting with item number one, the organizational culture survey. That was something that the board had decided they would like to do during the special session, I believe it was on October 1st.
Yes.
I just wanted to update you to let you know that I've been in contact with Rotary Charities, then have directed me to a company called Amy South.
What's it called?
Amy South. They're an HR company out of... I have a meeting scheduled with them on Thursday to kind of go over the scope of what the survey would be for and what was before. I also have contacted Human Resources Partners, which is a Traverse City company, and spoke with Kate from that firm. She would also like to get a little more information before she puts together a proposal, but I just wanted to give you an update to let you know what that is being...
So basically, you were seeking proposals, right? From at least two people, two organizations? Okay.
And remind me again, Darcy, this was because when Trudy and...
Kiesel.
Asked about Kiesel, yeah. Okay, so this is a follow-up to that.
Yes.
Would MSU Extension have any other leads in that area, do you think?
I certainly could check with them to see if they would.
You know, you could check with Chet, too. The organization he's with might.
I think...
I forget the name of.
MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute. That's a good...
Yeah, I could check with both of them.
It seems like the Traverse City people might not be charging us for housing.
That's what I was thinking, if we could keep a little more local.
And driving, if they're decent.
It's probably their biggest expense, so... Yeah, they might have some more local contacts.
So, yeah, I'll be looking for input from them and coming back to you with what they have applied.
Think it'd be a great thing to do in the coming months after we get the budget under control and, yeah.
Absolutely.
Super. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that? No, I'm just glad that you're pursuing it, too. Okay, number two, county policy, number 1.07, update for legal purposes.
I did not make copies of this policy. You've seen it several times. In its original format, which is the 1.07 is your non-union personal policy, the only update that is required by law at this point in time is we need to change the personal leave days available, they come six months, to 90 days. And that is pursuant to Michigan law that says it's from Michigan, I don't know what it's called.
So that's a recent change?
It was a change...
I like that change, but it...
It was a change that actually was, the law was enacted, I believe, in 2019. And then it went through some, I guess what we'd call it, a legal review, but it is standing, and so we do need to make sure our policy matches that. So in November, I will put that on the board agenda, if you're okay with that, to have that particular item updated.
So they actually enacted a law that you have to start giving personal days after 90 days?
It's a paid medical leave mat, yes. Which our personal days, because we don't structure them as you have, because we can use them for medical purposes, we can use that because you're part of the state board here.
Okay.
They do qualify for that.
I like the idea. It's better for personal life.
So you're just coming into compliance with the law? Okay, no problem.
So that will be on the November agenda for the board.
And the other previous recommendations have all been removed, so it is just purely just what the prior policy was, as well as what is now required by law.
Good, thank you. And number three, providing urgent maternal protections for nursing mothers. That Pump Act update.
That was something that came up for discussion during a meeting that we had this summer. To be compliant with the Pump Act, we do need to have a space available for nursing mothers to extract breast milk, and we need to provide them time during their workday to be able to do that. I spent numerous hours and several phone calls on a few different occasions with the Department of Labor, just making sure that we had this correct. But we were able to come up with a very inexpensive solution that pulls us into compliance. So in the women's locker room in the lower level, we have put a chair...
Comfortable chair.
A comfortable chair. We have added a screen that can be moved so that it blocks people from fully entering the locker room if someone said they're using the room.
Well, it's nice anyways, yeah.
There will be a sign beyond the door that will slide saying occupied, not occupied, so people are aware that it's in use.
Good.
That's a nice little locker room.
It is. I went down and checked on the chair. It's comfortable and it's, you know, it's, I think, the best solution we could come up with without spending a lot of money.
Field trip.
And it's very private.
It's not that exciting.
And it's very private.
This sign has not been installed on the door yet. Jerry has received the sign. It just came in last week, so I'm assuming he'll put it up sometime.
Oh, what is it going to say?
It says...
Are you occupied?
It's a lactation room sign, and it just slides, and it says occupied or not occupied.
So will that also be a locker room for shoppers? So somebody could go take a shower?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, when it's not being used, it's still available as its normal purpose.
And we're a small enough group that people will know if there's a nursing...
Well, and there's another bathroom 20 feet down the road, so, yeah.
Are you going to need a refrigerator down there?
There is a refrigerator in the break room.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I mean, we had this at TSA. I mean, it was like, you know, you had to come in and, you know, just check it and make sure that it was, you know...
Good.
All right, good.
Thank you. Easy fix. Okay, number four, the municipal employee retirement system. What are we reviewing? Service credit purchase?
Well, I reported to you that MERS did not report to us what we asked for. I'll give this to you guys, and if you can look at it.
Yeah, I need help with this. It's complicated.
Service credit purchase, okay. So this is a follow-up to the previous conversations about MERS and how we wanted to handle these things going forward, so there was some discussion about getting more data from MERS as to what is standard practice for counties, what's typically been, kind of been, recommended. So, again, what we were asking for from them, I believe, was kind of a little bit more specific data on how many requests have we processed in Lelandau County, what have been the, you know, the kind of the counties, how many of them have policies that specifically relate to either allowing or not allowing MERS credit recommendations? So that's just kind of, this was just a follow-up to that. There's no recommendation. It's just kind of a follow-up, so I'll let Darcy handle it from there.
This basically just gives you a general idea of how many counties or municipalities are offering service credit purchases. And then the second page shows the number of service credit purchases that were done for each year. I have followed up with the MERS team that we work with and have requested that what you were asking for was to take a look at some specific service credit purchases that have been done here in Lelandau County and what effect that had overall on counties and MERS. So they have followed, I followed up with them requesting that, and Tony Rogenovich is looking at the internal actuaries to see if that can be calculated for us. More to talk.
Yeah. So the first page, is that 11 counties or 11 times, or what is it?
It is so hard to read.
Oh, yes, I know.
But I believe it's other, it's blanket resolutions for other governmental service and generic services. Because when you purchase service credit, you can purchase other governmental...
Or generic.
Generic or no...
See, it never was that way. When I joined, you could only, you had to have prior service time or, you know, State Department time or Michigan time. And then when they made generic, means anybody can get it for years, right?
God, be my...
Five, okay.
But is this 11 times it's been done here, or it's done in 11 counties?
I believe it's done in 11 counties where they have each year, where they have a...
Okay, 59 of 74.
Blanket resolution that says anybody who wants to do this can do this.
Can purchase service credits? And is there any limit on what they can purchase?
They can purchase up to five years.
Okay.
That graph is, kind of, the second page is kind of interesting. I wonder why that spiked for those 1996 through 2010, 2009. Isn't that weird?
Yeah.
I'm looking at it. Huh, I don't know what was going on.
Well, in 2008, I bought four years or two years. I bought two years to retire from out of a narcotics business, because I didn't want to come back to being a road officer, so...
So you're expecting that information...
I will follow up with Tony and as soon as I have that, I will share that with you.
To the personnel committee, again, will it go to, or will it go to the full board?
Probably start here.
Okay.
Because then we can, I don't know what the board's intention is, but you can make recommendations to the board however you see.
Can we get a list of the 11 counties for that?
I can answer that.
Okay. Not everybody is in MERS anymore. Some of the younger officers, they're in either 401 or a different program. I mean, at one time, everybody was in MERS, but it's not that way anymore.
Right, not all counties even offer the options anymore, so that might be why those are, reduction in the number.
So 80% of the other counties allow people to do this, and we've always allowed people to do it. I've never seen us turn it down. So, I can't see.
It's not cheap to buy, I'll tell you, it's not.
Yeah, I'm always impressed when people make that investment.
And every time somebody does request, we have, the board has to approve it.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And we haven't had another request since the last one, so is that pretty common, too? Not very often?
A lot of people look at it, and it's very expensive, so it's hard to afford to even be able to do it.
So you don't get more than one a year or something, usually?
We don't. Even if you get one a year sometimes.
It seemed like it could negatively impact us, that.
Our last officer, I think, spent $60,000 to retire, and I spent $20,000 back in wait, so...
That's a big chunk.
I would put that money in the bank.
So what do you finally want to accomplish here? What's your end goal?
I really don't have a goal. It's up to you as a board what you want to do. There have been some questions of why you do this, should we be doing this? It's your decision.
And I think then it was...
And we've always done it.
I think then it was just to kind of come up and establish, like, a standard, if not a policy, at least a standard operating process. Like, what, how were these things requested, what kind of timeframe, what you're vetting, all that kind of stuff. So just to kind of help us to be able, the staff and HR to be able to look at all of those things and address any questions that the board might have.
So Commissioner O'Rourke, is your experience that people have gone over five years, like the person who spent $60,000, wasn't that more than five years?
No.
No, I don't think so. I spent $20,000 for 31 months or 24 months.
The math is that you are purchasing your retirement early. So if someone, let's say like Darcy, wanted to purchase and her salary's $70,000, she has to pay that.
Okay. Okay.
You have to be vested first, right? Right or not?
No, you do not have to be vested.
Right, you don't have to be vested.
Nope.
Okay, I've changed a lot.
But you can't use it for veterans.
Okay, I mean, good on that right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, number five, our voluntary medical sick leave donation policy.
I do have a copy of related policy that was proposed by the Human Resources team from Raymond.
Is that compliant with IRS?
It is. And there's some interesting things about it that I just want to share with you.
Well, again, while Darcy is handing that out, I will share that with requesting Raymond, actually Steve Peacock, the principal at Raymond, had suggested that we speak to their HR specialist.
Thanks.
And during the process, or after the process, I should say, we've received a bill. So there's been two bills, one for the first request and then clarification that was requested. I think when you had requested, is there a way to make it more personal? So we went back to them. So we do have some expenses related to their recommendations for this, which I will say I was frustrated with because there was never any invoice bill or discussion about pay for services, so...
They didn't clearly express that to you before?
No, no. So we are, we have requested, requested consideration of that, and I've not heard anything back at this point from Steve Peacock.
Hmm, that's interesting. You know, it seems like, could you, if you want to make a change to a longstanding policy, could you have a committee with a representative from each department, for instance, to run things by and get feedback, so just so that we're in touch with what the people being affected? I mean, we, talking to us is good, but we're not, we're not working in this building.
I do understand where you're coming from. The issue with this is there are IRS implications.
Right.
So in order to be compliant...
So we have to thread those.
Yeah. And there's, it's not always an easy thing to put together without guidance of attorneys or tax people.
And I'm just saying, so once, that's your yucky job. I'm sorry, it is. Well, that's a good thing. But then, once you've got the constraints, it just seems like it would help if you could run it by the people being affected by this and get their feedback about options.
I hear what you're saying.
Because we're not affected by it, so, yeah, we have to approve it, but I would feel better approving it if I knew that the people affected had weighed in on it, on what was legal. Does that sound, does that make sense?
It does.
I think that's a great idea, actually, to have maybe a volunteer, you know, employee committee to look at some things, so I'll...
I mean, like, this is something I could email out to the management team if I review it and just let me know if there's any suggestions.
So the management team is our department heads? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. But are you also saying...
Whatever works. And you could ask them what would work best for them, but I don't, yeah, then we're not springing something on them, and we've gotten their feedback and involved them. That usually is a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
And it would help you out.
Yeah. I think this just kind of came around as we were having some of our policies and discussions vetted with legal, then it came up that, oh, wait, there's a hiccup here, and so that's what caused the pause.
Yeah.
So, but to that point, going forward, if we know that there are other policy things we want to look at, that makes great sense.
Yeah, it just seems like, I feel more comfortable approving something in a commission meeting that I know has been vetted, that you've gotten a lot of feedback from the employees and you know it'll work within legal constraints.
Sure.
And I think funneling it through the management team might be the best way to go, just so that they...
The management team then could...
Ask their department employees, yeah, yeah.
And then provide feedback.
That system's already set in place, right? You have regular meetings, so wouldn't have to create a new body of, yeah.
Going back to my TSA that I keep bringing up, we had a thing called Model Workplace, and it was a voting position, and I was voted chairman. And I would represent all the TSA employees, and we were meeting with all the people, even the big bosses from Grand Rapids, Detroit, Chicago, and we met once a month. And it even got to where they trusted the employees so much, they had a thing called a peer review group. So if someone was terminated, you could go in front of the peer review group, and it's almost like a trial, whether you were bad or wrong or whatever, and the peer review group could terminate you or reinstate you. That's how much they got given. The Model Workplace, it really wasn't a bad thing. Somebody would come to that person and say, this is what the issue is. And the Model Workplace chairman and vice chair was elected by the employees. It's really not, I mean, I know that's a big jump, but it worked, really did. I mean, you know, one of the arguments was, you know, I have to be there 10 minutes early, but I don't get paid until 3:00, and you can't check out until 11:00. And if I got to be here 10 minutes early, why do I have to, you know, honey? Those, it was issues like that. But that's not really a bad, I mean, looking down the line, it worked, really did.
Something we could look at, too, yeah.
But you didn't have a HR person in...
Oh, yes, you did. Deb Stevens out of Cedar, yes.
Out of where?
Out of Cedar. She lives in Cedar, not with no...
It was in your office?
Yes, we had her own HR. She, yes, she had...
So this was an addition to that?
Just representing the employees by a, by an employee who was elected by the group. It was fantastic, you know, and quite often, that person could go to the HR, and a lot of things could disappear before it got blown up, but...
Non-union, probably, or would it be...
Oh, we were union.
Yeah, you were union.
Yeah.
Because we have both, right?
So we can have a non-union rep and we can have, utilize the current, current situation.
Yeah, we have a union, we have a, we don't have a rep, but we're not...
Not for none, not for none.
See, there you go. Model Workplace. It worked, it really did.
Which has been some of the discussions that we've had at the board level on items that relate to issues that non-union employees don't currently have a...
Voice.
Thank you.
Yep.
A voice on. So I will just say, for example, one of the items is vacation time, personal time. All of the unions have since negotiated those things higher than what the current non-union agreements are. So when we look at addressing those issues, unions have bumped them up, non-union, which are a lot of your department heads, and a lot of our administrative, or I should say, first-floor staff, don't all have that same level of representation. So in some cases, there's a little bit of, say, discrepancy, which were some of the things we were trying to address and brought before the board in the past. So maybe those things will be vetted here through the Personnel Committee, and a little bit more discussion can happen on those items when we bring them forward in the future.
Yeah, we keep fighting the unknown, but if we had a spokesperson, we would know who was right.
I like that idea.
And I don't like the idea of that lack of equity for employees. If I'm, if I'm working somewhere, I want just as much, I want the same benefits everybody else gets.
Sure.
But it's really tough.
It's tough, yeah.
That situation is very unusual and complex, so...
And for the meetings, I was given, obviously, time to conduct the, as, to conduct the interviews with, you know, the TSA's and with the, you know, with the director of the airports and everything, so I think it's a great idea, but...
Thanks.
Thank you for your input. And it's a lot of money, but it's not fair. And people feel that. People feel that. That affects, that affects the work environment.
That's what you're looking for.
So I'm going to have a really silly question, but like, the elected officials, they follow the non-union rules, right? Or not?
They really, the rules don't really apply to the elected officials, however, they're employees. It really depends. Some, I think, are, it's a mix of union and non-union, so...
So like Sheriff Borkovich, he's elected, and he's non-union?
Yes, he, see, that's right.
Correct, okay.
But the, there are three different unions over in the sheriff's department.
He's elected, but for example, he doesn't get vacation days or personal days. He's elected to do the job. He does the job if you're when...
Whenever.
Whenever, he's off whenever he wants.
Same with all the other elected officials?
Just like us, we don't have to be here, but after two or three meetings, they're like, ah.
Yeah, they're, they're not important to their situation involved for them.
So again, this situation is so different than any other work situation I have ever been in.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate the difficulty of your job, getting this all done.
But, yeah, maybe it'll lighten the load a little bit, you know?
I really like the idea.
Okay, we're back to the voluntary medical sick leave, right? Okay.
The highlight for the policy is it is compliant with the IRS.
Okay.
What would happen is if someone would qualify for FMLA leave and they needed assistance so that they wouldn't have extended or extended lost income because of that leave, they would request to their supervisor that they would ask for donations of vacation hours. Both their supervisor would contact HR. HR would calculate how much time was projected to be needed to cover the time that that person would be off. And then they'd send out a email to the staff saying, we have this person who's on FMLA leave, who's going to need vacation time, give them a posting period for donations, a maximum number of hours that would be received, once either the number of... Once either the number of hours was received or the posting period ended, no more donations will be accepted until another posting will happen. So they would know who they were donating to, they would not get the hours back.
And would the person receiving it know who they came from?
It would not know who they came from.
Okay. They could tell them.
They could tell them, sure.
Yeah.
The policy as written, I'm, I'm very satisfied with. The only thing I don't necessarily feel comfortable with is if you look at page four, it's highlighted yellow. If there's a balance, if there's a balance on the employee's return to work, those hours will not be returned to the donating employees and will remain in the requested employee's bank to be used for future FMLA leave. We don't know if someone's gonna have a future FMLA leave, so I would recommend that it would be, would be put in an FMLA bank.
They can't, they can't be returned to the person?
They cannot, once you donate them-
It's gone.
It's gone.
And that's a change from before?
Yeah, it's, and IRS, and you'll need to give them and give them back.
But you can't put it in a bank, that's okay with the IRS.
So is this specific to vacation time, or can it be personal time?
It is only vacation.
So the new people may not have that.
The new people may not be able to donate, and it's going to be looking to your more senior staff. And it actually puts the stipulation that you would have to, if you donate, keep 40 hours remaining in your bank to cover your own personal issue.
Oh, okay, all right.
I, are you Sarah? Didn't you just receive some hours? But you have.
Yes.
Does this sound, how do you, how does this sound to you, since you've been a recipient?
It was nice when I was a recipient, because I was off for COVID and then I had a baby.
Yeah.
And I had no time, so it was actually very helpful, to use my time.
Would it feel good to you to have the program structured this way?
I was dreadful of it.
That it goes to a bank? And then?
I was too much, we didn't, we weren't able to work on the baby, that's okay.
You're too smart. Okay, that's wise.
See, if you donate an hour, it would go directly to the person who is requesting the donated hours. We would, the big thing with HR is gonna be monitoring, we don't accept or take so many hours and put them in their bank that they're well beyond what the person needs.
If I can, there was a situation of that happening recently, where people were incredibly generous to someone. It was not an FMLA scenario, it was someone who needed to travel to go care for family members, and I think they received-
They received, I believe, 119 hours of, they issued donated vacation time.
Wow, four weeks.
You were spending-
What, three days, maybe, three or four?
No, it was, it was over a week.
Okay.
Probably around 50 hours.
So then you can imagine there's 50-plus hours that now are, have been donated to that person, but, and so if we were going by the, the appropriate IRS guidelines, that individual would have been taxed on those dollars, and the liability would also be for those people who donated that time.
And just for the record, we will always go by the IRS guidelines.
They don't have a choice.
There's a thing called misfeasance and malfeasance that we can get arrested for, okay?
So I, I included with the policy, the email from Elizabeth Williams for Raymond, and I did that just because I wanted you to read her feedback, if you have a chance, because she does talk about, you know, what happens if we put out, hey, you know, Sally from this office, he donated vacation hours and then no one donates.
Oh.
And what do we do then? You don't want it to be perceived as a popularity game. I don't know as if that would happen here, because overall, in the past, it seems like our employees have been extremely generous with people who need help.
But didn't you also say that some, let's say, the hours not used would stay in a bank?
It would go to the, the bank for the next person who may, if they weren't used.
Yeah, so we might get in a situation where we have a little cushion, and then, can I get back to your example? So what happened? I mean, this was fairly recent, and then?
It was the end of last year.
End of last year. So then, we just let it slide, because it was-
There's no, there's no policy, there was no process, no policy, no way to address that, so.
Precedence, yeah.
So again, I would, I would really, I'd feel more comfortable if you sent this out to the department heads and just got feedback.
I would be very happy to do that.
I just always feel better if the people experiencing it say, yes, this will work for us.
But should we look through it first, before?
The only question, really, that people could give feedback to because of the IRS regulation would be if it goes into a standard bank, as opposed to-
The way it's written, when I was referring to that, it's written that it would stay in the employee's bank until future FMLA use. Well, what if that person never has another reason to be on FMLA?
Then no one else can-
So then you have vacation hours that are in their bank that are restricted, and that is going to be an accounting nightmare, as far as that vacation goes.
And it can never help anyone else, whereas if we put it into a-
We put it back into a general bank.
Then it can be used to help others if needed.
I, I guess, an important thing to do is find out how long that person's going to be out, if the person's donating.
Do a good estimation.
I mean, you always know.
No, you don't know.
Your father's dying of cancer.
But if it's FMLA, there is a timeline that's associated with it, so it would help to, oh, we have guidelines on how many? I think it's 12 weeks for FMLA.
It's 12 weeks.
Maximum.
And it, it could be different, because some FMLA is paid, because if you qualify for short-term or you're on FMLA, you're, you're getting income. This would be for unpaid-
Yeah.
People who have exhausted their payments.
So what do you, do you need us to take this home and look at it, or are we gonna go through this item by item today?
I'd try if you wanna take it and look through it. If you're okay with it, I'll distribute it to-
Well, we just got it now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So I wonder, I think, I think it'd be nice if the three of us had a chance to look at it.
And then give Darcy just kind of any feedback, any questions?
You're going out of town, so.
I've always, I'm available, I phone, and every morning I do an email when I'm out of town.
Are you available to, you know, just look this over, so we can tell Darcy we'll all get back with her before?
I'm just not physically present, but I don't quit working.
It's not called vacation.
We have certain examples attached to this, like a person, you know, just, would might, you know, for the employees instead of, it goes in the bank, there's just a cheat sheet on it, if you will.
We could give a couple of different scenarios, whether it be an illness, or perhaps pregnancy, or perhaps some other scenario, so we can kind of speak to that.
Yeah. FMLA applies to family, and then what's the, there are certain parameters that applies to it?
It would be for a medical issue.
But, I mean, it's, it's a father, father-in-law, it's an immediate family?
Immediate family.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, yeah. That should be spelled out.
Since this has been kind of a hot topic, right? I think we should try to work on this ASAP. Can we say that within a week, we can get back with Darcy? Is that, or is that too much? For us to go through this and give our comments back to her before she were disseminated to any department heads or management unit? Is that doable?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm gonna get this right, because you're not gonna meet. So the consensus is each member to review?
We can also take five minutes right now and read it.
And give Darcy a call.
I mean, we had, we have it till six, technically, but.
It's up to you, I mean, because you could do consensus is each member will review and Chairman Ross to notify Weaver when ready for a management team?
I'm just seeing a lot of red on this, and red means it's something new or changed, correct? So then that just makes me like, this takes a little bit more time than I need right now.
Part of the reason why I like that is because this policy came to us from corporate counsel as kind of a generic policy, and then when Raymond got it, they took it for personalized it.
Yeah.
And we didn't have any policy before, so it's, that's practice. So that's why you have legal, and then you have the red line, which is IRS, and then there was another feedback component, if we wanted to make it more personal, that's what the yellow is.
Okay.
Boilerplate.
Okay, so that's, that stands.
So no, no recommendation, what's your recommendation?
That within a week, we're gonna all get our input back to-
To you.
No, to Ms. Weaver.
No, to Mark.
I don't know if you can individually contact her, that's what I'd have to check on.
Why, Cam?
We've been doing that.
Why?
You see what I'm saying? Because you're communicating as a committee.
Okay.
So I just-
So could we communicate to Cam, to Commissioner Ross?
And I'll consolidate and, and then give a report?
Then you would, because really, you're just giving permission for her to give it to the management team, right?
Correct.
So.
It's a committee, but it's not a quorum of the board.
It's a quorum of the committee.
No, but I see the point, if, I see the point, I mean, just that if you all give your feedback to Cam, and Cam then can share it with Darcy, and if that's okay with everyone?
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great. And then again, this would go to the employees, give them a couple of weeks, then it comes back to you to make it pretty, and then the full board, or back to us again? Probably back to us, okay.
There's a couple of scenarios.
So let's try to get this wrapped up, though, by the next November meeting, though, if we can. Is there a chance we can meet before?
I think that depends on, I'm not sure-
Mine would be a Zoom.
No.
I can't vote on Zoom.
Okay, that probably would add.
When are you back, physically?
Physically.
Oh, she's coming back. Anywhere from five to two days before the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh.
Between five, two days and five days.
Depends on when we go, yeah, let's just go, well, the weather's there. That might be a little tough, then.
Maybe we can look at, possibly, the, the only thing is, we had talked about, the request was, is if it's all possible to have committee meetings meet a few days before the board meeting, so that those minutes can be-
Shared with the rest of the board.
Shared with the board, so that they can be, you know, discussed at, at the board meeting if there's recommendations, so.
So we don't wanna rush it, so maybe we should just, yeah, not try to push it.
We will look at dates, like maybe Thursday or Friday, prior to the executive committee meeting, to see if that would potentially work.
And, and-
So I can't just read it and say, I'm good, and you guys can-
Yes, for the recommendation, but you need to have it on a meeting.
Yeah.
And I can't do it on Zoom.
The thing I'm concerned about, if, if there is a couple of scenarios which was, I think it's a great idea, we just have to make sure that the scenarios are correct. I mean, that, that-
FMLA, FMLA is pretty clear, though. FMLA is pretty clear.
I, I think it's pretty clear, it's just there aren't the big changes, it goes into a bank, and, you know, and you have to be careful of it's not to give somebody over hours and, you know, hurt your, your, your own bank, it's, I think it's pretty clear the way it is, but.
Okay. Are we all set, everybody?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Number six, job description reviews.
I'm gonna lead a little bit on this one, just from the standpoint that at the administrator's report that I submitted last Friday, it was just kind of an overview of a couple kind of cleanup issues, like just kind of wanting the board to be aware that as we go through this transition, there are still some things that have not totally been-
Blown out.
Or, or addressed. And so I think that everybody is very aware and willing to be flexible during the, this transition, so while it wasn't anything that it was like, hey, we need an immediate, I did wanna put this on the agenda, because we will need to formalize, you know, what, what these new structures will look like, to help everyone to be successful in their jobs going forward. So I think at that point, there's really three individuals with this change specifically, the administrator, the CFO, and also the Assistant Finance Director. So those three positions, I think, have reporting components that are potentially impacted by the change, so it's just an opportunity for us to, to review that, and again, to vet it and clarify it, so.
This, this, yeah, this has gotta be a hard time for all of you right now, because we're creating, we're finding out what works.
That's right, and, and we know it's flexible, we know it's fluid, and, but I just, like I said in my message, I would be remiss if I didn't at least say to the board, this is something that we do need to get our, get our hands around. Right now, it feels like getting your arms around Jell-O, but, but it's coming, it's coming.
So how do you see us moving forward, just through this body, through this committee?
I think, my understanding is that there's some feedback being sought to determine what roles and responsibilities will need to be based on the Raymond report, so I think that's kind of guiding some things, so we are kind of looking-
Who's spearheading that?
Well, Sean is kind of taking the lead on the Raymond report, so kind of identifying what some of those roles and responsibilities will be as part of that, and we'll kind of come from those discussions. So I think it's gonna be a, just a, a group discussion, as we've talked about before, the importance of just kind of having everybody in a room and saying, you know, how, how can we make this work? How do we make this work? What do we need to do with this, so.
But will it come here first, as personnel?
I don't know, but I think it will need to be vetted with some of the staff first, as I understand the suggestion has been, and then from there, I think then we'll have to kind of craft the documents. We have some working documents that, you know, we already have, obviously, there's already job descriptions for some of those positions. The CFO position will need to be created, because we don't currently have that, so that's probably number one, and then how that impacts two and three will be the other parts of that.
And whose responsibility is that?
That would be HR and administration, but with, you know, obviously with the board's, you know, insight and direction, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that Sean is our teacher on what a CFO needs to be.
And there are some other examples, I think, that we had sent out from other counties, that kind of, so it's like a framework, and then from there, it can be clarified. So it's, it's a work in progress, but again, just wanted to let you know that it is progressing.
But job descriptions are, this committee, would be this committee's first?
I, I think that's true, and we have a job description that's in draft form, and we would bring that here.
Okay. I was called out last night in Leland by a resident who said that he would like to see some sort of policy that creates a way when we make structural changes to this, to this institution, to ensure that we're moving at a pace and going in the right direction, and I took it real to heart. And, and I think that's what we're trying to do, by creating this Personnel Committee and a Finance Committee, just to give ourselves more time, but I don't know when it comes to creating policy on making a change in organizational structure, where that would start, but I do understand what he meant, and I think I agree with what he said. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, we could suggest, but as a board to the board.
But it would be interesting to see if there are any change management policies that are out there, like how change would be presented, so we'll do some research on that.
Yeah. Well, and your experience is really important. You are very, very important, because your role has changed somewhat, but you know what you need as your job description, in a way, I mean.
I do, I do, I just don't know right now, for example, a lot of the components, wasn't always the county administrator had a finance role. That's relatively new in the last two years, so, oops, sorry. So now it's a matter of, with this change, what does that still mean? And, so, those are just some of the things we have, we just have to work through.
Did I read in the ticker that the new city manager for Traverse City is the administrator and the CFO? I just saw that Boval.
There are some counties that have a comptroller, or controller, they call it, but.
Seven some thousand.
Yeah, what a job that must be for her.
She's in Saki Counties, where she's from.
She's a Boval, she's a dairy farmer, hardworking girl.
Was she?
Yeah, she's great.
Liz is a Spitfire, too.
Yeah. But it just, it just reminded me that, um, yeah.
I have a problem right now with, with, we're talking about job descriptions. Chief Financial Officer, okay. Everybody knows that the Chief Financial Officer, while I think he's doing a great job, and it's just common knowledge that he is based on 35 or 40 hours a week and he's in here at 6:30 in the morning. And he's doing 50 and 60 hours a week. How do we take a few hours off of his? What does he need? Does he need a girl Friday or somebody to come in? Does he need someone with more hours? What, and I don't, I don't know anything about counting. I just know it's all numbers. But we have to give him, you can't expect him to work 60 hours a week to fill this budget. You can't expect anybody to do that. You're going to make mistakes. So.
And you know, something he told me is they're so lean that if one of them is gone, they can't function. So I don't see how they function without at least another clerk.
But the only person that can tell us what he needs to complete his job is that office. But it needs to be, I mean, that's a, you know, we could say if you want that, my finance committee could say, yeah, okay. He could, he gets paid for it. I think it's, I would not be doing my job if I hadn't brought that up here and said, we need to give him some relief right away.
Well, I think he is definitely, I won't speak for Sean, but I understand he is right now looking at what all is required for this Raymond and coming up with some recommendations. Understanding is that he is looking at that.
And I think this speaks to what I was just saying, you know, as we do this reorganization, I feel like we need to go fast because we need to give the support to somebody who needs to put a budget together. But in the same vein, if we rush through it and just make big changes, hire somebody new because he needs them, I just worry about that too. You know what I mean? I just, it's a, these are big decisions.
It is, but it's, you know, back when I was a medic, you look at somebody in an accident, what's your chief complaint? The chief complaint right now of finance is enough hours not being on your job. I mean, it's important. It's the most important question in the county right now.
But maybe we do something on a temporary basis.
Absolutely. Just any way we can just relieve the, relieve the pressure and getting down to, you know, 40, 40, 50 hours where you can.
You guys can always call a special meeting in between our monthly meetings. To approve hiring a person.
But we need to know what he needs and the only, he's the only person that can let us know.
So what did we need to do with these job description reviews today? Or what was your hope, Darcy, in bringing this to us?
I just wanted to bring it up as a point of discussion so that we're all aware that there is a need here. And I'd be happy to start working on this with guidance if you would like me to. I think if you're interested in me working on a job description, it would be sitting down with Sean and saying, what do you see your role being? And then bringing that to you and saying, is this what you were expecting?
I think we do need to start.
As long as, as long as you two, you and Sean, are the people saying this is what we need to do this job. And not to discredit you, but I always want to go to the people doing the job.
Oh, absolutely. I wouldn't write these on my own.
Yeah.
No, not at all.
But I think we have a good frame, I think we have a framework to work from and then to get the input from everyone. So this, there was no action or recommended. It was just an awareness building that this is going to be a process.
Yeah. And it is a process, so it might take a little while.
And what was that with the first time? May not stand for long, but as we go through this change, continue to evolve.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think anyone at this point can really say exactly, this is what we need.
And the other one you had mentioned that was the.
And I think that's, I think that's probably the third one that we need to probably.
So would that include more hours or what? I don't know. That's what Sean's going to be telling us.
Correct. So we'll meet with Sean and start the process.
Right. What work needs to be done? That's the question.
It is interesting though, to your point, that the administrator's contract is the same, 35 hours. So, I mean, just, you know, so there's a rationale for doing that from a, from a wage perspective. But there's also the reality perspective of what that, what it really entails. So.
I completely agree. And it's the same thing for any person here elected or just appointed. You know, I get emails from the clerk's office Sunday. Wonderful. I get calls of, is that overtime, Jen?
Who it is? If it's me, nope.
It's not. So they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart to call me?
If it's Allison, it's overtime, it's vacation hours.
If it's Michelle, she's salaried.
Well, yeah, but I mean, okay. And it's the same thing. And Allison doesn't have enough time, enough, she's got too much work and can't, you know, that's something the model workplace could look at, you know? Say, are you over?
I have encouraged the clerk many times to ask for more staff.
So model workplace, something to.
Well, you know, somebody in this courthouse has to send me an email on Sunday afternoon. They work hard anyways. I just, I can't see.
Well, I think information comes through and it's timely and they need to get it to you out as soon as possible.
I hate last minute bomb shows.
Better than Monday.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, that's been a.
We're on the same page. I can tell.
But again, this goes right back to that idea of getting input from the staff. And so that's what you're really getting.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
And so we're, that's the number one, two, three, four priority for your busy schedule. I know your list is pretty long right now looking at this, so. Did we have any other business that we wanted to, nothing else on the agenda? So I would open up this meeting to public comment. Mr. Makowski, any public comment today? No. Commissioner comments?
First, good meeting? I don't know. I guess, again, we, this meeting, I mean, we never really, we formed this committee and obviously Personnel Committee, I've got an idea. But we kind of started out the conversation with a mission of the whatever.
Yeah.
I just.
How's that mission statement come?
I mean, the role of this group, obviously, is to just delve into more personal issues in detail and then bring our recommendations to the full board.
And we work in and and with the HR person.
And the administrator. So we're all in agreement that this is, this is going to be good, good for the county. Are we going to have monthly meetings? Is that what we've decided or just called as needed?
As needed.
I think as needed. I'm always more comfortable if it's been vetted with the employees. I don't like to spring things on people. But I would imagine as we get all. As we get started on this committee, I would see trying to meet, you know, again in November, as soon as we're all able to again, to help you move forward on some of these really important things. So, everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? And then move to adjourn, adjourn?
Yep.
So moved. Okay, all in favor, let's adjourn.
Thank you.